Call the meeting. Thank you. I will call the meeting to order at 6:37 PM. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the republic. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. Item number four on the agenda is public comment. We would ask that the public comment is on something that is not already on the agenda. We would ask that you use the raised hand option. And we will be limiting comments to two minutes. And we'll look for anyone who has any comments. So we will move forward with that. Chip, I would look for your assistance as you see any hands that might come up.
We have one from Angie Sturm.
All right. Angie, we'll start with you. Thank you for joining us.
You're muted, Angie.
Thanks. I had a comment that includes a few questions that maybe are going to be answered tonight or soon. But this is a follow up to comments in previous months, meetings regarding white nationalist propaganda being found around our downtown and in the Aldis Hill playground. I keep finding it. It has slowed down, I think. I wonder if there are any persons of interest for spreading conspiracy theories, et cetera, in St. Alvin's. Also, if I'm correct, the New England Police Benevolent Association is the SAPD's union. And they endorsed former President Donald Trump. They were pro-Trump. And Donald Trump, who last week incited an insurrection of white nationalists against our democracy at the Capitol in Washington DC. Do you think that the union's endorsement of Donald Trump and his white nationalist friendly stances is appropriate? Does the SAPD or the city of St. Alvin's intend to release any statement on the issue of white nationalist activity in our community or among police officers on the force or in our state? With news that FBI intelligence suggests that there are armed protests planned in all 50 state capitals this Sunday? Can you tell us if there are any related investigations in Franklin County at this time? And is our force finding cause to make any special preparations for possible violence here in Franklin County ahead of inauguration day? Thanks.
So Dom, Chief Lamont's on the call.
On the call, yeah, those are pretty specific. Angie, why don't you give me a call and I can give you, I do have some answers to some of those, but they're longer conversations than we have some time for right now. And they're going to lead to follow up questions. 309-1775. And I'm happy to visit with you on what we know and then we can take it from there.
Okay, thank you.
Chip, do we have any other hands up?
We have one from Eric Johnson.
Yep.
Yeah, Eric Johnson, Word 5. I have two comments. One actually is just added. I would be interested in hearing the city's feedback regarding what Ms. Sturm just brought up as far as the statements around the white nationalism. The other part I was wondering was, has there been any been addressing of the items I brought up last meeting regarding traffic speeds on smaller backroads in the city? As well as the increased bus traffic around the Ferris-Lincoln intersection, I know is going to be discussed further with, I believe Dominic and Marty, we're going to discuss it offline. I was wondering if anything further came from that.
So Eric, we did discuss it. Dom, myself and Kate Ladison, who's your councilperson. Poor timing on our part. We discussed, we discussed it over the week of Christmas and New Year's. And the way we left it was we were going to try to visit that area when school was back in session. We haven't gotten to it this week. But we wanted to see what the issues were firsthand. And so up to that point, we had not addressed any of the concerns, just based on timing. So we will be visiting that here within the next week to 10 days and get a feel for what the issues are.
Thank you. We've seen increased bus traffic and increased speeds again. So that's why I brought it back up. Thank you.
So we will, myself or Kate will reach out to you. Eric can let you know, I'm sure we're going to have questions after the fact, so. And we will probably reach out to the school as well.
I appreciate it.
No problem. Okay. Chip, are you seeing any other hands up at this time?
Not seeing any other hands up. I guess if there's anyone who can't find their hand raising, maybe if they could just speak up now, be recognized.
Hearing none, we'll move on to item number five, which is an overview of the town meeting day voting and articles. I'll turn it over to Dominic.
Thank you. So tonight, we're going to talk about four different potential town meeting day articles, and we'll do a deep dive into each one of them. The first is a proposal for a year round pool at the Hardak Recreation Area. The second is a proposal for a new water tower at Aldis Hill. The third is a TIF bond and some state revolving fund dollars for the Kingman Street street scape. And the fourth is the FY22 general fund budget. We'll do deep dives into each one of those, and we've got some of our consultants here with us. But I thought it would also be good to get a short briefing on process wise, how we might do voting at town meeting day. I don't think we have enough information yet to make a decision. But I thought Curry could brief you on that. Mike's on the Committee of Jurisdiction, so we've got two experts in the room. Maybe you guys could tag team on what the options are. Curry?
Happy to do so. Happy New Year, everybody. So for what's on the table in legislature as far as town meeting day and voting goes, is to push back the date and time of the annual meeting day and to send ballots to all active voters, much like the state did in the general election in November. And this decision is up to the governing body of the municipality. So I come up with three options that I think, you know, would be a good starting point for council members to ponder. The first would be mailing ballots. So I'm a big advocate of vote by mail and mailing ballots. However, I am finding some challenges with this particular election. And those challenges are number one turnaround time. So the ballots aren't available until 20 days before the election. And, you know, can a mailing house get those out in a timely manner? And the other challenge that has me a little concerned is getting the right ballot to the voter. It doesn't seem like a huge challenge, but it is something that I wanted to look at. Since we do have three ballots, you know, for the different ward races, we do have the school ballot. I spoke with Anna Borden in the town, and we still don't know if the Maple Run Unified School District has voted to send out all the ballots by mail. So we could just do our own if we wanted to do it that way. I had put together some numbers as of Friday, but as of last week, I am realizing that there are in fact $2 million in CRF funds that the Joint Fiscal Committee has come up with for us. So that was going to be a huge piece because I, just this bottom, bottom level of the quote for vote by mail would be about $9,000, and that's on the low end without the ballots I would need for Election Day, the election worker stipends and things like that, other costs. So I think, so and a lot of other municipalities have gone not doing it this time around. I know Berry City has decided not to because of the wards. And again, we could just do a simple, you know, a mailing. We could go ahead and just do each different one, each different file, send it over and say, hey, these, get these ballots. You know, so it's not the biggest challenge, but it is something to think about. And not a lot of hands went up at our legislative committee meeting today. But South Burlington, who has a big populist, will be going ahead with it. They're using a company called Paw Prints and using the same company we use to print ballots called LHS, and they were quoted at 27,000. So, but they do have, you know, about three times our voter checklist. So we would, the other option would be, oh, and one more piece to having a mass mailing to all active voters would be just kind of the internal work that would be involved. If we used a mailing house, that would definitely be the preference with 20 days. I'm not sure BCA members would be available or able to complete this task. It took hours just to process return ballots when we got them in at the last election. Granted, we did receive a lot, which may be significantly less in this election. You know, and then we do have smaller things come up like taxes are due around that time. So just the other office things that the Office of Two would have to handle. And I do have Sarah Gabory, our Assistant Clerk on, on the call, just to jump in in case I'm missing anything. Another option would be a postcard mailer, much like they did in the statewide primary, where they would get sent a tear apart postcard where one would just be their address and they could tear off, sign, you know, their official signature in order to get it and choose which ballot they wanted, if they didn't want the school or if they wanted both. And then we could drop it in our Dropbox or put it in the mailbox. I did receive a quote of about $4,500, $4,500, but that did not include return postage. So they would have to put their own stamp on it or bring it to the Dropbox. So now that we have the funding available, though, that is actually the more expensive option. The third option might be to, and that, I just gave a crude draft of what I thought it could be. And that's in your council packet, so I apologize for the basicness of it. The third would be to leave it as we have done it with perhaps added publicity for voting. I know that the messenger did a lot of publicity about how to vote on, you know, during the presidential election. You know, things in the paper, that sort of kind of campaign, in addition to just have it be the basic request for a ballot. Just for your information, the 2020 annual meeting, we had 161 voters vote by absentee and 1,372 vote at the polling place. And just if, I think all of you were there. If you voted by mail, maybe you weren't, but at the election in November, we did receive a grant and were able to spend a good amount of money on COVID-19 safety procedures, safety measures rather, and then we implemented a lot of new procedures that helped voters go through the polling place in a safe manner. So we do have a really, really good setup for Election Day. So that's just some stats for you. We should know by Friday. I think, I don't know if Mike wanted to chime in. I know it passed through the House. It's supposed to go to Senate. Maybe we might know by Wednesday afternoon and maybe at the Governor's Desk by the end of next week. So hopefully by the end of this week, we should know what's going on if they're going to let us do this. But hopefully I've added just a little bit of background for you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Curry, just a couple of questions or comments. Can you give us an indication of because of mailed ballots for the presidential election? How many, do you have an estimate of how many names you cleaned up from your voting list? That may not.
Yeah, so we, we were not able to clean up a lot of the undeliverables. This, we just didn't have the staffing for it. We did receive maybe 200 to 400 back, and a lot of that had to do with apartments. So there might be, so if we generate our own checklist, though, our own mailing list, we may have a better chance of having those types of errors and undeliverables avoided. Whereas the state had sent it out in a way that it bounced back, but the people did live there. So it does affect people who are a little bit more transient, so they may not get that ballot, and they would have to know to call in to get it. But yeah, we were able to do some cleanup. We were able to do some purges and go back and do some challenges through land transfers and things like that, because you're not supposed to do a lot of cleanup 60 days before the election. So after, I did go through and get some out, but it wasn't a huge purge by any means.
And then my other question or ask you for consideration would be, and I think you've had the discussion, but I had received some complaints about the difficulty of some individuals to climb the stairs at City Hall to get to the Dropbox. Can we look at an option that is on sidewalk level where people could utilize?
Absolutely. And so this state did offer some funds for drop boxes, but they needed to be ADA compliant. But so what we ended up doing was increasing or expanding the size of our internal Dropbox and then plans down the line. And I know Marty had brought this up recently to have a Dropbox outside because it really does, it really needs to be available for people not going upstairs. So and clarification around the necessity of drop boxes is something that we're bringing up in the Clerk's Legislative Committee as well. So there may even be funding available for that, but for this one, I might check in with Marty to see if we could get something of a temporary nature, you know, on the ground before then. But definitely in the future, I think that might be a permanent fixture.
What would be? All right. One thing that would be nice, and I don't know if it's doable, but where we have the pullout near City Hall in the theater, or the pull in, I should say, maybe if we had some sort of a Dropbox where you could drop your ballot in from the car as opposed to getting out, walking up to City Hall, I just didn't know if that was something that might be doable.
I would definitely bring it up with the team here for sure. Yeah, any, any ideas are really good. Whatever works best for people. You know, we really just want them to be, make it easy for them.
Thank you.
So Curry, when do you need to make a decision by, as to what route you're going?
Well, in the next two weeks, I would think, you know, I'm going to continue to, I'm going to act as if you were to say, yep, get ready to mail them out, you know, and if you say, nope, don't worry about it, that's fine. We, if you wanted to do it next year, at least we'd have, you know, some good research done for it. But yeah, I think we would need a decision as soon as you could get one to us.
Okay.
Mike, does the legislation specify whose call it is?
Oh, it's ours.
It's the council?
Yeah, yeah, we would get to decide.
Legislative body, yeah, okay.
Yeah, the legislation is entirely permissive. It doesn't require the municipality to change anything.
Right, but the authority between the clerk and the city council, it's vested with the local legislative body?
Yes, it's with the, yes, the local legislative body. So it's our call. And I guess, Mike, just to give you a sense, Curry, it passed out a committee in the House Friday. We anticipate a rule suspension tomorrow. It's going to be on the floor in the House, so it'll be in the Senate on Thursday and could, yeah, so it'd be in the Senate on Thursday because they're going to have to wait one legislative day to, unless they suspend their rules to pull it up off notice. But that could still put it on the Governor's Desk on Friday. So that, you're, the final timeline, which is the important one, is right. I guess my question to you, Curry, is it would seem to me that the choice is really between either going universal mail or doing it the way we always do it. It doesn't seem to make sense to send out postcards. And if we, I guess my question is if we did a bunch of advertising to try to get people to mostly vote early or by mail, even if we didn't do a universal mailing. Do you have a preference there? And is it harder for you to sort of process more absentee and early voting if it's not universal?
If we did a universal by mail, my preference would definitely be to use a mailing house going out. I really question our ability to send out and return in in 20 days. You know, put some weekends in there, you know. I have full, full faith that we could do this if this were, you know, if they decide down the line that they want to push these meeting dates back or expand the time that we can, you know, handle some of this volume. You know, I think that would be very easy for our office to do and to serve our community in that way. It's hard because I'm such an advocate for voting by mail. And again, this is the decision of the council. My preference might be to kind of go as we have. And the processing for that, even if we doubled it, wouldn't really be that big of a deal on our office. But if we wanted to go by mail, and a lot of this is just from today, I've just been reaching out to clerks frantically, kind of asking how they're doing it, because it is, it's such a tight window to really function with. I think that if we found the right people and we could send out each different ballot and ensure that those ballots are good. Last year, they're all different color ballots because it makes it a lot easier to process. They all came the same color. So I had seven white ballots, you know, so, or excuse me, five white ballots, and that was really tough. And we don't get to check the ballots, and that doesn't sit really well with me. We don't get to do any ballot testing. I have every faith in these ballots. They're amazing. They're sturdy. They're, it's, the company is just all integrity, but I might not have the opportunity, and if I did, that would delay shipping the ballots over to the distributor. So it's just a lot of these strange little delays. Like Wednesday, the 27th is the deadline for candidates to say, hey, oops, I don't want to, I don't want to run actually. So Thursday is the earliest that I can get my ballots to LHS, get my proofs and say, go to print. And that would take until maybe the next week. And then they would have to either send it to me or to the distributor. They would have to do their processing. So it's just, you know, it's, again, I don't want to make it sound overly complicated because it might not be. You know, we could just send that mailer out. We, it's just a matter of a bunch of different phone calls, different pricing, and finding out how those CRF funds are delegated. You know, do we have to front that cost? I would think not. But, you know, I don't know how they're handling that and what each municipality is getting in their portion. So I don't know if you've heard anything about that, Mike, but so I could, I'd be happy to provide counsel with, you know, a follow up as well, not to take up too much of your time this evening. But this is pretty much the information that I have. We could do a mailer. I think the preference might be to maybe keep it as is for now with extra publicity and plan and budget for mailing to voters in the future. That might be, you know, one way to go about it.
I'm good with voting. Why can't the council, the council take care of this tonight? If that's the way the clerk preferences it, then I'm, I'm satisfied. That's the way we should do it. Whatever is most comfortable for her, she's the one who's running the show.
I agree. Sorry.
And Tim, I definitely appreciate that. I definitely do. But if anyone wanted more questions on doing a mailer, I'm happy to follow up on some information. It would be, it'd be just really, really tight. We could make some magic happen, but yeah, I just want to tell you, but thank you again, Tim.
I, can, may I talk, may I comment?
Yep.
I agree with Tim. I think we should make that decision tonight, give you all the reason why you need to do this. The reason, one of the questions I had, how is, how is the school doing their ballot? You know?
I asked Anna today, and she wasn't sure. They were, they didn't know yet. So, and I wasn't sure if the town was going to be, you know, doing all by mail either. So she's just still waiting on that as well. Anna's the clerk of the school board, so.
School board, okay.
I'm waiting on that, too.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's, that was my question. Thank you.
If I could just jump in, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
So one of the things that is in the legislation that we added at the last minute was the intent that municipalities would coordinate with the districts and the other, you know, municipalities. So, you know, some places there are like fire districts and other, you know, types of entities that have ballot items. And so I think we might want to say that if we're leaning toward doing what we usually do, we don't have to do anything tonight. But that if Curry talks to Anna and says, you know, there's a reason for us to rethink this, you know, we probably should be thinking about getting together for a special meeting quickly to address any of those concerns.
Unless there's an objection, I'd propose that we take the general direction from the council to support the clerk's judgment, and Curry and I will work to finalize the proposal when we bring the final budget back. And, you know, which will be in the next, in a week or two, right? And we'll know a lot more when we have a plan.
Right, and I think we have to work this together with the school because if we do a general, you know, an all mail in, and the school requires people coming to vote, that's going to be crazy. I mean, we have to, we have to partner on this.
Okay.
So based on that, Dom, we don't need to make a motion on this?
No, it's not one for D and V. It's just, it was just a briefing to get a sense of the council's sentiments, and I think we, we have that.
Curry, one last question for you, at least from me. Is that clerk of the Supervisory Union, does that rotate between the towns?
It does, yes.
And you're up for it next year, or?
I, I don't know. I think I might, there might be a couple clerks ahead of me. I have to check into it. I know Anna just got it. So I think it might be three or term, but Anna just was elected to it the last election, so it'd be a minute anyway, yeah.
But it would just be between City, Town and Fairfield, right?
Yes.
Anyone have any other questions for Curry on this, any comments? Curry, thanks for your time, as usual. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And Mike, welcome to GovOps. Happy to have you there. I'm so excited to be in some of those meetings with you. Thank you, guys.
Of course you are, Curry. Okay, we're going to move on to the water tank discussion, water storage.
We're going to do pool first.
Oh, you're usurping me?
Without a water tank, you won't have a pool.
All right, go ahead, then.
The, so you'll recall in December, we presented a proposal for a seasonal pool at Hardak and a $250,000 investment in recreational amenities at Hilton Park. And the sense was that the council liked the cost reductions we had achieved, would ask us to return with a proposal that offered a year round option. Tonight, we present a revised plan for a year round pool at Hardak. You'll recall that when we had a joint project with the town, the proposed project was 5.5 million. This proposal reduces site and building costs by 750,000 and adds a $250,000 allowance for Hilton Park, as discussed, and comes in at 5 million. So that's the question that would go to the voters is a $5 million proposal including the Hilton Park appropriation. Debt service is estimated at 300,000 per year. And those payments would be made by city residents using the local option tax, and we would layer in some additional funds to, on the non-resident user fees for their contribution to the debt service. Construction costs will not be paid for by city property taxes. Programmatically, we continue to plan for the Aqua Van to offer free transportation from the city to the pool at Hardak. And we envision a planning process for the amenities at Hilton Park. But in broad strokes, that vision entails construction of a splash pad or similar water feature, recreation program staff presence at Hilton Park, expansion of the snack bar and bathrooms so it can be opened during the day, service as a free lunch site, that presently occurs at the city pool. Service as a free lunch site, that presently occurs at the city pool. And we would establish the park, uh, continue its establishment as a hub in the neighborhood where folks could gather and use the splash pad or, or other water feature. Catch the van to Hardak if they wanna do, or uh, just stay at Hilton. I'm gonna turn it over to our architecture and engineering team uh, to walk through uh, some of the specifics about the project, uh, the changes to the site plan and the changes to the building. And then we can open it up for questions. Chip, can you roll the PowerPoint slides, please? Laz and Peter, I'd turn it over to whoever wants to speak to it. Remember to unmute yourself.
Yeah. Peter, you wanna go first since the site is up?
Yep, I'll, I'll start. So you see uh, the uh, new lodge that's recently been completed on the left, extreme left and, and brown. The pool is obviously the bright blue area. The pool house is to the left of the pool, the proposed pool house. And the driveway and parking area is in the dark gray. We have eliminated the driveway, the new driveway, from Congress Street uh, and are planning to use the existing driveway, which doesn't completely show on this drawing. We still have in the project a recreation path and sidewalk. The sidewalk will extend along the northerly side of Congress Street to the more or less easterly boundary of the Eastview Development, and then from there, we'll have an eight-foot-wide gravel recreation path into the site, which is on the lower-left part of this uh, of this site plan. Uh, the parking lot has been reduced a bit in size. Um, we've shifted things around, changed some grading, it's, and reduced, eliminated some sidewalks to keep the cost down. But basically, the project's intact. It's the same pool that we, that we went to the voters on last March. Uh, we also have the inflatable dome, which doesn't really show on this plan, but the inflatable dome will cover the pool and be connected to the pool house. Uh, it's the same dome that we had previously um, been uh, working for or towards, and it's manufactured by the Farley Company out of Ontario. Uh, so basically, it's still an intact project, but we've sacrificed the driveway, some parking. Uh, Laz will tell you about the building changes. Um, but it's still a, a really nice project and will be a great asset, I think, for the city and, and community.
Hey, Chip, can you go to the next slide? So, uh, this is the floor plan for the pool house. Um, we've reduced the size of the pool house, uh, we did some redesign. And it's really two buildings. Uh, the building on the left contains the bathrooms and showers. And the building on the right contains office space for the pool house manager, the lifeguard. There's laundry facilities for towels and other amenities that need to be taken care of. There's bathroom and locker rooms and showers for the staff. And there's also some storage space, and then also um, for all the pumps and everything in the pool equipment room. There's also access to a, a bathroom from the outside, so you don't have to go into the building. And the center space is gonna act as, it's gonna do two things. In the wintertime, it'll be enclosed, so, and it'll be a connection to the pool, so you won't have to go outside, but in the summertime, the doors, these are folded doors and it'll be all open. So it becomes a covered exterior space in the summertime, and in the wintertime, it becomes in, enclosed to give you a um, a, a warm area to go from the pool into the two buildings. Can you go to the next slide, Chip? So this would be the view of the pool in the summertime. Um, as you can see, that centerpiece will be covered, but it's really outdoor space. So events, um, gathering of people can happen within that. Um, and then you can see the pool area um, on the outside. And then if you go to the next one, Chip? So you can see these doors stacked, so in the wintertime, they can be closed, and there'll be physical doors that open and close, just like in a regular building. But in summertime, they can be folded back. They're easy to move. Uh, they're hung, so they really work well. And it would be full glass doors, so even when they're closed, there would be a lot of visibility for staff to the pool area. And Chip, if you go to the next one? And this is the view of that same building with the dome in place. And that's it for our little presentation.
Great. Thank you. Well, those are the shortest PowerPoint slides Chip's ever been a part of. So thank you.
I didn't make them. I have a longer presentation coming.
And can, can those um, slide, can those photos be shared with us uh, online, uh, by email or anything?
Sure.
I can send, I'll send them right now.
Thank you. So. Uh, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead. I was just saying we would open it up for questions and discussion.
My other question is, uh, and I don't know if Kelly, she's with us, uh, um, uh, I've had a couple constituents ask how, um, um, how often it would be open for public swim, or, or is it, is it, is it limited as to when the public could use it?
Um, I am here, Jim. Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, so with this configuration in this pool, we would have public swim all the time. There would always be, you know, pretty much all the time, there'd be an option for public swim every day.
That's what I like.
There's different areas, and that was something that was always a problem, trying to balance between getting swim lessons in and getting public swim in, in, in a day's time.
Great. Thank you, Kelly.
Hey Laz, on that last uh, photo that you showed, it, it didn't look like the uh, dome connected to the building. It may be just the angle of it, but does it?
It, it does connect. It's just, it's really the angle and I mean, the intent was really to show the building with the dome, but there will be a physical connection between the two in the wintertime. So it'll be a, a, a covered, treated area where you can go from one to the other without going outside and freezing.
Yep, that's what I thought. Okay, just wanna make it clear.
Yep.
Counselors, uh, council persons, do you have any questions or comments for Laz or Peter, or Dom, or Kelly?
Hey, Tim, this is Chad. I have like, I do.
Chad, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions. Um, that first photo, the site plan, both those sidewalks um, that go from the parking areas to the pool, it seems like both of them have stairways. I'm going to assume that um, the one coming there from the south and then the one coming from the west, it appear they both have stairways. And there's no parking at grade, so I'm going to assume that there's a way that um, someone that maybe have some mobility issues can make it from those handicap parking spots to the pool.
Yeah, there, there is a handicapped ramp. It's at the southerly stairway off the end of the building. You see the kind of U-shaped sidewalk that goes to the left and then back to the right? Um, that.
Okay, I see it.
That goes around the stairway, and it's a handicap ramp for ADA, and then the dark gray spaces are the ADA parking spaces for the pool.
Okay. Thank you. And then my other question is, is ideally, I would absolutely love it if after school um, there's an option for the kids to come up here. Um, I don't know if it's, you know, my parents will pick us up here or there's some kind of after-school programming going on. Is that parking lot gonna be big enough for a bus to swing around in?
Yeah. Uh, actually, I, we, we have buses, um, we've had buses almost every single day this week at Hardak. Um, and even with a, a lot of equipment and construction stuff, buses um, manage regularly to turn around in that parking lot.
Okay. I'm just hoping if all the car, if they had like, if some party's going on there and a lot of those parking spots are filled, they still have enough room to turn around.
We, we do have overflow parking in the green space at the bottom of the drawing. You see those two little stubby driveways that are headed south? That's the, that's access to the lawn area or the grass area, which is an overflow parking area. Uh, we have reduced parking in the main lot, and th- there will be a need at, at times to use that overflow parking.
Okay. And again, the, the pool does have um, zero entry, correct? So.
Oh, yes.
Li- little kids can play in ankle-deep. We don't, you know, we're not worried about it going from zero to three feet.
It's definitely zero entry.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone.
So we're looking at, Peter, the, probably the peak use of the parking lot would be on a thirty-degree winter day with the ski hill full and then the pool full.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I was up there yesterday, Sunday, and I counted fifty cars. And the rope tow wasn't even running. Um, so, you know, I don't recall how many spaces we have on here, but uh, it's probably not quite fifty. So it will be important to be able to use that overflow parking.
Questions, um, comments? Tim, Kate, Marie, Mike?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I uh, reached out to a number of constituents to get some feedback after our last meeting, and the vast, vast majority were supportive of us uh, having a year-round proposal versus the, the seasonal proposal. Um, and, you know, I, I really appreciate all the work that went into both of these phases of bringing the, the pool project back to life. I know it's been a a ton of work and a long process over the, the last year, but um, people really want to have a pool, and if we're gonna make the investment, they want it to be year-round is what I'm hearing, and I really uh, think that there's a lot of support for this, and it'll be a great asset for us.
Thank you, Mike.
Uh, Tim, chat again. I'll second Mike on that, and then the other thing I'm gonna implore is that we get lots of good information on the website. Uh, shortly after our last meeting, I was on social media doing a lot of information correcting. Uh, so it'd be great if in the middle of doing that, I can just point people to a location and further information. So I could say, here's what it is. Here's where you can go to see it.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kate.
Hi, Kate.
Um, question about the sidewalk on Congress Street. Is this, is that uh, a part of this project?
I can answer that. Uh, it certainly is. It'll, it'll start at the top of Congress Street near the City-Town boundary and extend down on the north side to the gravel recreation path that is just near the easterly boundary of the Eastview Development. At that point, it'll stop and become a recreation path, gravel recreation path into the project.
Terrific. I thought so, but I just wanted everyone on the call to hear that. Thanks, Peter.
Sure.
Marie or Tim?
Uh, this is, this is Marie. Um, I, I really like it. I, I uh, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great project. Um, unlike Mike, I had, you know, a couple of people that thought we were crazy for pursuing a five, a five million dollar pool. Um, but I think, again, that's just lack of information, so if we can uh, have a, a place where we can point them to and say, okay, here's, here it is, in black and white, read it, and uh, you know, maybe better educate them. I, I think it's a matter of education, and um, so, anyway, but I, I like it. I, I think it's beautiful, and I think it's a great asset to the community.
Tim, are you good?
Mr. Mayor, this is, this is Jim again. I uh, um, I think it's important to stress to people, especially I'm directing this more to, toward Marie, that this is not gonna be paid out of city property taxes. It's all local option tax and user fees.
Point, Jim. Kelly, can I uh, maybe? And may, maybe this should come from Dom, but give some thought as to some other creative ways that we can educate the public and share the, share the message. Whether we collaborate on some public Zoom meetings, um, maybe once a month up until voting, or some other instruments such as that to get the word out. Uh, I think that was probably one of the issues from the last time is um, it was, came out pretty short-term. I don't think, a, a lot of people didn't think we'd answered the questions that may have been out there, so um, I think that should be a focus, is just trying to, to educate our, our voters maybe better than what we did.
Yeah, and we have a lot of good avenues through the Recreation Department with mailing lists and um, members and, and accounts on our, our website, so there are, there's a lot of, there are a lot of things we can do to get, yes, uh, questions answered.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, I think too, uh, just mainly stress that, no, it is not gonna be an expense to the taxpayers. I think that's what everybody is, is afraid of, so I think just to highly stress that, that it's gonna be paid through the um, uh, lot funds. And uh, you know, I think that's important for them to know, so we really need to flag that big time.
Let's just remember, it, it passed two to one last time in the city. So I, I think we did a good, uh, where we had the trouble last time was more in the town. I, I think we need to absolutely do, do all these things.
Good point, Dom. Uh, let's open it up for public comment. Um, once again, if you can use your raised hand feature. Chip, I will look for you to uh, but let's open up for public comment if anyone would like to. If anyone has any questions for Mr. Skangus or Mr. Cross or, or a city manager or Kelly as well. Now would be the time to do that.
Not seeing any raised hands at this time.
I think it's important, if anyone from the public has any questions or concerns, and they can't think of them right now, to reach out to your counselor.
Also, if you can't find the raise hand button, uh, maybe just speak up. Let the mayor know you'd like to speak.
Anyone? Going once? Twice? Three times? Okay, let's move on from the pool. And Dom, are you set on that?
Yes, please. I'm good.
Okay, so we'll move on to uh, the item that I got bumped from, um, the, the water storage tank. So uh, Dom, I'll turn that over to you.
And um, this is our second article uh, on the, on the morning. I'm gonna pass it to uh, Marty, uh, our Director of Operations and Wayne Elliott, uh, with uh, his uh, firm to give us a walkthrough of the project and the numbers.
Thank you. I believe is Wayne on?
Yes, I am, Marty. Yeah.
I see you there, okay. Um, so this is just a continuation of the conversation we had a few months back regarding the um, insufficient finished water storage that we have currently. Uh, this would add a second water storage tank, million-gallon tank up behind the existing tank. Um, and i- it basically is, i- is that if we don't have one, it's gonna come to a point where we can no longer issue water allocations because we won't have enough uh, water storage to take on additional uh, allocation, so. I'll turn it over to Wayne, and he can walk through the, what we're looking at in the project and open it up for questions.
Yeah, so we, good evening. Uh, so we uh, we went through this back in September. I'm just gonna do kind of a brief overview of some of the background here. Uh, the state completed a sanitary survey in November two thousand eighteen, and they identified one of the major deficiencies was insufficient finished water storage. Um, so at that point, the city got into and moved ahead with the uh, plumbing engineering study. Uh, that was started in the September of two thousand nineteen and completed in uh, June of two thousand twenty of this past year, and um, that included the recommendations for the new storage tank, evaluation of alternatives, um, rehabilitation, uh, recommendations on the existing tank and some, a couple other things. Um, the state did approve that report and the proposed project back in early September of, of this past year. Um, kind of over the past two or three months, we've um, two or three months, we've, um, done some survey up there, uh, tightened up the site plans, working with the, uh, tank manufacturers and the city's been working on the land acquisition piece for the, uh, new storage tank. Um, little background on the existing tank, uh, there's currently a million gallons in that existing, all this hill tank up off from Congress Street. Uh, the welded steel tank was built back in nineteen fifty-three. Uh, and pretty much what happens is, um, of course, the city gets their treated water from, uh, from two sides. It comes in from the west side from the lake. It's pumped up there, um, from the easterly portion. It comes in from the Fairfax Water Treatment Plant by gravity. So it comes in from both directions with a primary, um, source, really the Fairfax Water Treatment Plant. Um, and what it does is this tank, existing tank on Aldis Hill provides storage, uh, for both domestic and, and most importantly, uh, fire protection. Back in September of two thousand nineteen, um, as part of the plumbing engineering, the city, uh, worked with Suez Utility Company. Um, they performed an inspection, uh, interior inspection of the existing tank and issued a report in September of two thousand nineteen with some recommendations for the rehabilitation of that tank. Alternatives considered, uh, for the new tank, uh, we looked at multiple different sites. Um, we looked at different types of tanks. Uh, we determined, you know, moving forward and including some, um, measure of expansion for the twenty-year design year, uh, we concluded that, you know, we needed another one point two million gallons. Again, that's the, uh, covers the domestic demands, both current and future, and also the fire flow protection. Uh, we looked at different options as far as raising the existing tank. That really wasn't possible because of the increase in pressure. Um, so the preferred option was the, uh, to co-locate, co-locate a tank at the existing Aldis Hill Tank Site. Um, and we prefer to recommend that a pre-stress concrete tank partially because, uh, it can be backfilled and kind of in a similar size to the existing steel tank in the, uh, in the front. So the proposed project, we split this up into two phases. The first one is the, uh, construction and getting the new water storage tank into service. Uh, phase two, um, consists of, uh, rehabilitating the existing welded steel tank. Uh, in order to meet the requirements moving forward, both tanks do need to be in service. Um, having two tanks is pretty common, especially in larger water systems, and it really provides redundancy. It provides the ability to take either tank off or out of service for, you know, short durations for maintenance inspection purposes. And what's really important about having the two tanks up there with a new tank constructed first is that, um, if that happens under phase one, once that new tank is operable, it allows the city to go back and do the rehabilitation work on that existing steel tank. Again, to future, you know, reinvest in that, um, original infrastructure and extend the useful life of that tank. Um, so phase one includes the one point two million gallon pre-stress concrete tank. It's gonna be in back of the existing welded steel tank, as you'll see on the site plan. So it's gonna be to the north. It includes all the site improvements, yard piping, um, staging area, um, waterline connections and telemetry. Uh, it will have internal mixing to help improve the water quality issues, uh, to move the water, um, into both tanks. Uh, phase two, which not, is not included as part of the discussion in detail tonight, the cost, but that includes, um, rehabilitate, rehabilitation in the existing tank, which would happen after the new tank is placed online. A little bit about the project schedule. Right now with phase one, um, you know, we're talking about a potential bond vote in March of two thousand twenty-one. Um, at that point, if the bond vote passes, we get into the final design permitting. Uh, this possibility, it could go to construction late summer, early fall, um, depending how smoothly, um, some of the permitting and different items. We have tried to the conservative approach here and kind of assumed, so the costs are really built on kind of assuming, uh, going to construction, uh, next year with, um, a start in May of two thousand twenty-two. Uh, estimated construction costs, you know, based on the two thousand twenty-two construction schedule, about one million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Uh, and then the phase one has a total project, project cost of two million three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, the total project cost includes a ten percent construction contingency, which the state requires, you know, all the engineering. It includes legal, it includes a white lane acquisition, uh, permit fees, administration and short-term interest. So that's how we get from the one million six hundred and seventy-nine thousand to the two million three hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, typically would recommend that the bond amount be based on the total project costs of the two million three hundred and fifty thousand. And just to continue, uh, you know, we'll submit another request to the state for the, uh, drinking water SRF priority list here in February, which is coming up, um, shortly. Um, and that's to get this project in the fundable range. And then we're gonna continue to pursue the, um, funding options here through the state drinking water SRF program. Uh, and also we'll look further into the USDA grant loan and funding combination and, uh, you know, help here to, um, so that the city can, um, pursue whichever funding package looks advantageous moving forward here. So that's a quick overview, Chip. I don't know if you wanted to show this, throw the site plan up there. So this is kind of oriented, uh, south to north. So the very southerly part of the page isn't shown on this drawing, but this is, um, Congress Street kind of runs left to right here. Uh, you can see the circular, uh, existing one million gallon, um, existing welded steel tank. And then the new tank is gonna have a slightly larger diameter, you know, at the one point two million. And part of it is to fit within the vertical profile of that existing tank. Um, we're trying to preserve the staging areas to the left of both the existing, the new tank, uh, so they can pour the cast on site here, um, set up a crane, you know, to make, make ease of construction. So the plan is to put that behind the existing tank, um, for constructability staging. And also, uh, we're gonna backfill around it just for statically so we can hide portions of that. Um, so it's not gonna be as visible, you know, if you're driving down or up Congress Street. Okay. Any questions?
I would just add, um, the existing tank we have now is a million gallon tank. We typically have about eight hundred thousand gallons of water in that tank. Um, over the last month, we had two leaks, uh, one behind Price Chopper on a Saturday and then on a following Monday at, uh, the Energizer Plant, we went through almost a million gallons of water between those two leaks. So a second tank is imperative if in the event we had, uh, those leaks happen at the same time in order to try to, before we can get there and shut the line down and keep our system going with our pumps.
Yeah, that's a great point, Marty. So if you had one of those leaks, you had a fire, um, you know, it really just helps to give you some redundancy and some storage here to make sure that's available for, for fire protection.
Marty, I have a, I have a question for you around that. Um, a couple of years ago, you know, we had the incident with the hospital and we had a line break. We couldn't shut down the, the tank from basically emptying into the street and it put the hospital in, in perilous situation where, um, there was no water basically. And, you know, the boilers and everything run on, off water. Um, are we all set with valves throughout the rest of the system? So if something were to happen, we could, we could cordon off that leak? Uh, depends on where the leak is. Our, our biggest challenge when we have a leak, we, we can repair the leak. It's getting the valves to work properly. Uh, you know, these valves aren't exercised on a regular basis, which is normal. You don't, uh, you don't turn them until you need them, uh, when there is a leak. I think the incident that you're talking about is a situation that happened up on, uh, Upper Weldon and then on Barlow Street. Again, they had two leaks basically at the same time. And it was the main line, it was the eighteen inch line coming down Thorpe Avenue and the twenty inch line, uh, that crossed over and was going to the hospital on both those lines. And, and it drained the tank and you have the potential of negative impact and, uh, a whole lot of other catastrophe potential there as a result of that. Again, having a second tank, you're, you're able to, um, kind of cordon those off and be able to feed the hospital off the second tank. Uh, but that's our biggest, that's our biggest concern is with the hospital there and the, not only the, the water supply they need, but the quality of water they need. Okay, thank you. And that kind of feeds into my next question. Um, creating, we, obviously you explained it very well. We have a fragile system that's very old in many places. Um, adding this new tank, this isn't gonna create additional pressure or additional head on the system, is it?
No, it won't. Um, and that's why one of the questions initially was, you know, in many cases, we'll look at raising an existing tank. Uh, and, you know, you always have situations on water system where, you know, a low pressure can be as bad as a high pressure. Um, and because of the elevation difference, you know, the city has some very, very high pressures in those lower areas. So it was really gonna be a negative, you know, kind of have a negative impact on the system if we, if we did raise that tank. So that's where we kind of concluded it made more sense than technically what was more, a better fit here to, to construct a second tank at roughly the same, at a similar elevation.
Okay, okay, thank you. We, we looked at other sites. We looked at a site, uh, south near the Fairfax Plant. But again, like Wayne said, it's very important to have, pressure-wise to have it at the same elevation. So this made the most sense.
What's gonna happen? Both of these tanks will work together. So the water level will work kind of in concert with both, both tanks. And so there won't, won't be any change to those pressures, um, that, that what you currently see now.
How, how deep are we going down with the second tank?
Uh, it is in the ground. Um, it's gonna be similar. It's a little bit shallower than the existing tank. So, um, we do have some site work that's included in the cost. Um, there's gonna be some pretty significant site work up back there and, um, and ledge removal. Um, we are shallowing up a little bit. Um, it's gonna, the bottom's gonna be about eight feet higher than that existing tank. Um, and that's actually, it's a couple reasons. We're trying to reduce some of the site work, uh, ledge removal costs. Um, but we also want those two water volumes to work better together. So those kind of two items really, um, drove the floor elevation and, um, uh, uh, kind of the footprint of the diameter of the new tank.
All right. Yeah, just let's make sure that we let, I mean, there's all kinds of rules and, uh, around blasting, but if we're blasting, let's be real upfront with everyone that lives in that neighborhood.
Wayne, this is Tim. Uh, thanks for joining us tonight. Um, on your site plan, there's some shaded areas. Is, are there, is there any significance to those areas?
Yeah, you look in the ones that are kind of crosshatched, um, those are, those are areas of exposed ledge, Tim.
That's what I thought. Okay.
Yeah, yep. So if you walk kind of up to the existing tank and around to the left, you know, you do see boulders and, uh, exposed portions. I mean, that's another reason we were trying to also kind of push it to the east a little bit, Tim, to get away from some of those higher elevations and those areas of exposed ledge.
Good. Have you done any borings in this area yet?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we've done all the geotech and all the boring work. And actually kind of see those on the drawings, Tim. They're, uh, circular, um, partially filled that are numbered. So all the boring locations.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions for either Marty or Wayne or Dom?
I'll admit, it's not as exciting as the pool, but it is exciting.
Can it double as a pool someday?
Perhaps. Well, we do have to go in and clean them. So when we do that, Tim, we would offer that experience.
Dom, do we know what the debt service would be based on, uh, worst-case scenario? Three percent?
Um, lights could probably run that while we're talking. It'll be layered into the, uh, Enterprise Fund, the water budget. Um, so we haven't spent quite as much time on that yet. Um, Tom, can you run those numbers?
Do you want me to respond to that, Dom, a little bit or?
About a hundred sixty-five a year.
Yeah, so we're trying to figure out what the state's gonna be offering for the funding package, Tim. Um, that's part of the reason for getting the party list. And we'll have this all figured out here, obviously, you know, well in advance of the bond vote, but we're working on that at the moment. Um, that's a little bit about why the construction schedule is kind of set up as it is. Um, we do also wanna, you know, further discussions with RD because you do qualify, you know, because you're under the ten thousand population. Uh, so we're into the next fiscal year cycle and we're trying to confirm at the moment with the state, you know, exactly if there's gonna be more subsidy, you know, forgiveness. And so we can, uh, absolutely calculate and make those estimates well in advance of the bond vote. So we know what the impact to the, uh, water rates are gonna be.
Great. Thank you, Wayne.
On the loan portion, Tim, the first loan payment, you know, worst-case scenario wouldn't be due until a year after the completion of construction. Uh, so it could be even as late as, um, you know, end of two thousand twenty-three.
Yep. Okay. Tom, and you did say you thought about a one sixty-five worst case?
That's at a twenty-five year. Uh, we'd probably do this over thirty and it'd be about one forty-five. But like Wayne said, um, we're hoping there's gonna be some loan subsidy there.
Good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Any from the public? Either use your hand feature, uh, or go ahead and speak up. Not hearing any. Uh, Wayne, thanks again for joining us. Marty, thank you for that. And Dom, thanks.
Thank you, Wayne.
Yeah, thank you.
So we'll move on to the fourth item.
Next up is the, um, presentation of information related to the Kingman Street Streetscape. Uh, this is a combination of funding sources, but the, uh, largest one is the tax increment finance portion. Voters will recall that this is where the funds from new development pay for public projects that were necessary to incent that development. And so this is the last piece of our downtown core project. Um, the increment is being provided from a number of sources, but, um, uh, in chief, this is, um, the existing projects, the hotel, the state office building, Congress in Maine, um, and some of the, the rest of the growth in the district. So it's been a long time coming. Uh, we're delighted, um, to bring this project forward and, uh, you'll see why Chip Sawyer is the PowerPoint King when I turn it over to him shortly. Oh, it's all you, Chip.
Given a PowerPoint like three years, but let's see if we can do it. Um.
Uh, one more thing real, real quick. Sorry, Chip. This project has, has been approved previously by the council, so we'll touch briefly on the project, but mostly what we're gonna talk about is the financing of it.
Yeah, as Dom said, uh, this would be the final Streetscape project that wraps the downtown core where a lot of the TIP increment's been created for the life of the district. Um, project would be your typical Streetscape project, but you know, notable would be the wider sidewalks, a new mid-block crosswalk, which you can see back on this graphic here. Um, we'd be able to increase the number of at-grade entrances to businesses, which would benefit many of the storefronts along the street. And, um, those wider sidewalks would give us the ability to put this tree, streetlights, banners, the bricks and the landscaping that we expect to see on a downtown city streetscape today. The project would also be, um, replacing and upgrading where necessary the underground utilities as long as providing new stormwater drainage and a little bit of, uh, combined sewer separation for what runs on the street and perhaps a roof drain or two as well. That's why you're gonna see, um, some of the, uh, financing coming from the state's clean water and drinking water funds. Like Dom says, the project plan and the layout was approved by the city council back in two thousand seventeen. Final design stages followed that. The final plans were approved by V-Trans, uh, late, late last year. We are currently preparing the final bid package and we plan to go up to bid in February. We will probably have the bids opened, uh, before town meeting day. The bond vote would then come in March and then we have this time so that we could award the project to the contractor based on a positive, uh, bond vote. We're looking at a combined bond vote. It would be like one item on the ballot and it would say that one million dollars of the financing would come from, uh, tax increment and then five hundred and fifty thousand coming from the Vermont Clean Water and Drinking Water State Revolving Funds. The estimated total project cost- Estimated total project cost is around 1.9 million. That includes soft costs as our estimates of soft costs and construction costs. The project is not yet bid. Under other funding sources, other than the bond vote we're talking about would come from state and federal grants and required match. For the SRF financing portion of the bond vote for Kingman Street, we're looking at around 290,000 from the drinking water fund from the state and 265,000 from the clean water fund, planning to finance right now at around 30 years at two percent. Yeah, but as with the water tank discussion and what Wayne was just telling us, the city will seek all available subsidies to actually lower the actual debt load. So we probably actually won't be taking out $550,000 in total debt. We expect to see some subsidy from both of the state funds. We just can't predict at this time exactly what it'll be. We have to we have to apply for those subsidies. On the tax increment financing side, you're going to see some slides that the city has required to display at a meeting like this. So we're going to go into some details. There might be some redundancies here. But we're looking at $1 million in TIF funds proposed for this project. It's part of the Streetscape Phase Two in the list of TIF district projects that are in our original TIF district plan. Total cumulative amount of TIF district debt that has been incurred to date by the city is nineteen point five million. Once again, the total project cost is just over 1.9 million. And TIF is proposed to take on 51% of the overall project cost. That includes the related costs and soft costs, which are estimated at 251,000 at this time would come out of TIF. They would be financed. Those related costs will be financed as part of the $1 million TIF bond. And it's all included in the total project cost. The improvements to be financed include for reconstruction of Kingman Street, new curbing and sidewalks, increasing the at grade business entrances as part of that, utility infrastructure replacements and improvements, sewer, water, stormwater, everything, including services where where possible and where necessary. Streetscape enhancements, you know, basically the classic look of downtown St. Albans that has served us very well right now. The new street lighting banners, trees, you'll see holiday lights on Kingman Street. When this is all done, it's going to be great. And new signage and line striking. City will be using some interim financing with the tax increment funds to start a $1 million line of credit for probably around nine months from the project inception until we're able to to secure the final municipal bank bond that will be that'll take over the 1 million. We're looking at an interest rate on the line of credit of 1.75% per annum and estimated interest costs of just over 13,000. The general obligation bond will be the final vehicle for the TIF increment financing. We're planning to utilize a general obligation bond through the municipal bond bank, $1 million, probably over 20 years. Estimated interest rate at 3.25% per annum. Estimated interest costs will be around 375,578. We don't anticipate any other fees at this time. The city has no plans to use interfund loans at this time either. So we're still in the slides that were required to display to voters as part of the tax increment finance statute. So just kind of bear along with us. The anticipated development or redevelopment, the sort of private market investment that we look to see resulting from and and happening simultaneous with this project. Well, as you know, the project is associated with all the Streetscape improvements we've been doing downtown that surround the downtown core, which has already seen significant private development. It's sort of keeping the TIF promise that started a long time ago to spur on some of this private development in the first place. You'll also see indirect benefits to surrounding properties on Kingman Street, increased pedestrian activity on the sidewalk. You'll probably see some more outdoor dining, perhaps even some events. And those have those typically spur increased private investment in buildings that are adjacent to those new refurbished Streetscape. We've seen this play out across the downtown. But overall, the Streetscape projects included in the TIF district plan are linked to some specific speculative private redevelopment that we had proposed where possible way back when the TIF district was first proposed. And that includes perhaps some development at the Handy Downtown site, for example. Development around Stevens and Catherine Street, some of which we're already seeing. Handy Lake Street, the former Handy Lake Street property where I think the I forget the power line equipment and Midas are right now. At the Custom Service Center property on Lower Weldon and the Switchyard property, which is the large parcel where you'll find Food City and the laundromat and other stores. But overall, we've seen private development also occur at many sites that we had not anticipated that that have responded to a lot of the public investments the city has made over time. So as you know, this bond would not be paid back. The debt would not be paid by the general fund, either for the TIF or for the the water SRF fund, but specifically for the TIF. And you'll probably recognize this statement that we need to make sure everyone understands that everyone's hereby notified that if the tax increment received by the city from any property tax source, whether it be the state prop education property tax or our municipal tax, if that's insufficient to pay the principal and interest on the debt for this project for the TIF debt specifically, or other forms of district financing that we use for the project, for whatever reason, including if the state changes the education property tax and doesn't make any provisions to to make our TIF whole as part of that, then the city is going to remain liable for the full payment of the principal and interest for the term of indebtedness. This caveat has accompanied every single TIF vote that the city's run. It's required. And I think our track record stands pretty well right now. So that being done, it's time for questions and comments.
Counselors, any? Counsel persons, I should say. Any questions for Chip or Dom?
You can try to work up more slides if you'd like.
I had one clarification. I thought I had read someplace, and this is probably more for you, Dom, that this project would be the the last Streetscape TIF project. Did I read that someplace? And my reason for asking that is what's a how would that affect Federal Street?
Doesn't really affect Federal Street. The we've opened up discussions with the Vermont Economic Progress Council about increasing our debt ceiling in order in light of the cost increases on some additional projects. We've laid out a very conservative plan that shows where the increment comes from to pay for it. So we've got a debt ceiling is currently 23 million. And we have we've got this project and a couple of others slated that begins to bump up against the 23. But it's really the improvements in the environmental cleanup at Fonda that causes us to need to go in and ask for a little more, about another million and a half. So that's that'll be coming at future council meetings, but we were doing some analysis as we get to the end of the TIF and approaching the debt ceiling of just really kind of TIF budgeting, figuring out what's going to go when. And those concerns have have abated substantially. I think we're in pretty good shape.
And can you are we at the point regarding our TIF projects that we would we we are in a position where we cover this debt service based on the incremental values that we've increased?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the we're just looking at this last week. So Tim and Tom and Chip, give me some help with it if need be, but there's about 16 million that's coming on to the grand list in sort of projects that are already accounted for, like Congress in Maine and the the growth at Dairy Farmers of America. And the balance of it is coming from projects that the city is in direct control of chiefly the Fonda redevelopment project. So we're in good shape with our ability to service the debts on Kingman Street as well as the remaining three or four TIF projects that round out our plan based on the increment that we're projecting.
Thank you. City Council, any questions for Chip or Dom?
I have a really weedy kind of question. Is there is there any hope that we can get a bike rack in front of Tim's house when we build that little bump out? Is that is there? Have we got to that level of detail yet, Chip?
You know, we haven't, but it's so there will be totally be space for us to put a bike rack there if we so wish. Yeah. I think in this plan, we decided to go with a lot of hardscape instead of mulched area. So there will be plenty of space for something like that.
Why do we have to? Why do we have to have a bike rack in front of Tim's house?
Not not your house, Tim.
Or mine.
Bike to your place.
Tim's house. Why? Why? Why specifically wanted there?
There's a lot of the people that that end up there at night because they're they they don't have another place to go. They are on their bike. So you'll see him tie. You'll see him roped up out back and they're just all over the place out back where it'd be nice just to have a nice bike rack where they could lock them up out front.
Okay, I've never seen that, but okay. I just want to know why why that place was particular for you for the bike rack. So that means nobody else other than Tim's place will be able to use a bike rack?
No, no, because it'd be in that bump out. So if someone if someone went to Tetrils for lunch, they would put their bike at the bike rack.
Well, shouldn't the bike rack be for people that are going to be utilizing the services on Kingman Street and not just dedicated to one building and or one clientele, one building?
That's where the bump out is, Tim.
I think Chad is saying that it would be open to everyone, but the high a high level of demand is from Tim's house.
And that's where the bump out is. I mean, if you want to put it in front of if you wanted to put it in front of people's, I don't care about that. It just seems like it'd be nice to have a bump out bike rack on one of those bump outs.
Okay, gotcha.
And it keeps us from putting, you know, three foot tall plander pots.
You know, it's clear to me that Chad wanders the back alleys at night all the time.
Rolling for bikes.
Old old habits are hard to break, Jim.
Okay, any questions? Is there anyone in the public that has a question or comment relative to this project on Kingman Street? Chip, I'm not seeing any hands. If there's anyone who just wants to chime in, feel free to do so. Hearing none, we'll move on to the proposed budget for FY FY twenty two.
Thank you. Enclosed in your packets is the proposed FY twenty two general fund budget. And I'll just tee it up a little bit here. And then all the department heads have joined the call. They'll all be available for questions. I'll give you the overview with some of the themes and the strategies and then walk you through each cost center highlighting the pertinent parts as we go and welcome questions along the way or at the end, whichever you prefer. But the biggest driver in this year's budget was the loss of the roughly million dollar police contract with St. Albans Town. We were able to achieve about 600,000 in savings through elimination of seven positions in the police department. The remaining 400,000 was achieved throughout the organization, including police through a combination of fee increases, loan payoffs and FY twenty one using LOT funds and freezing any equipment and vehicle purchases in the capital improvements plan. Effectively, the pause button is on the CIP. That's not a long term strategy, but it's something we can do this year. Importantly, while we recommend eliminating positions, no current staff members lose their jobs. So I that's that's worth repeating. There's positions that we're reducing, and nobody that's working for us today would lose their position as a result of this budget proposal. Within the police department, we're proposing eliminating four patrol positions. This returns us to a total of 12 officers plus a detective. We had an analysis performed by Municipal Resources Incorporated to advise us on appropriate staffing levels with the loss of the town contract just focusing on the city, and that's what they recommended for patrol. We're also eliminating the two street crimes positions. All of this is proposed at the staff level. We're proposing eliminating the dispatch director position. That's Chief Lamott's former position. These duties will be transferred to Lieutenant Kucher. And Parks Patrol would be eliminated, and we would direct the police officers to conduct foot patrols through the parks. We've reduced overtime and other personnel associated costs throughout the budget with the reduction in force. We do continue to plan for a Highgate police contract and have made a proposal to Highgate. We've increased the hourly rate there. And the rest of the organization, we are using the FY I mentioned the FY twenty one local option tax revenues. We're paying off a pile of debt in FY twenty one. A lot of our very short term, you'll see it in the debt cost center, but that total is about 145,000 that it clears up within FY twenty two. We propose eliminating a $10,000 reappraisal reserve. Our CLA actually went up recently. And it may be though maybe time to consider doing that. And perhaps a book reappraisal incorporating new values into our tables. More on that later, but none of that discussion is really impacted in a significant way by whether we reserve 10,000 or not. We had just started doing that. We also propose to increase the affiliation fee from 28 cents per $100 of assessed value to 32 cents per $100 of assessed value. Under our ordinance, the affiliation fee has has been hasn't been increased for five years, during which time the city tax rate moved about 2% a year. And as originally envisioned, those were designed to move in lockstep. Not a lot of money there. There's about 10 grand, but it's it's an important, I think, step to take and adjustment to rebalance rebalance the relationship between the two. We're eliminating the city marketing campaign. We've moved all stormwater costs to the stormwater utility. We're making some increased adjustments in the non residential recreation rates. We've made minor inflationary increases to residential rates. And we've reduced funding for the Restorative Justice Center from 30,000 to 15,000. This is a bare bones budget. We came in at zero last year and we're coming in at 2.5 this year with a with a whole lot of work from department heads. And just as we jump into the detail, I just wanted to sign a a note of appreciation for the ideas that the department has brought and their openness to others' ideas. It was a it was a great process. Absolutely grueling. We've had a lot of challenges over the last 12 years, budget challenges, but nothing as great as this one. Went into the process with 2020 vision, came out wearing glasses. So it's been it's been a bear. With that, I will begin to move into greater detail. Next page is the snapshot impact on the homeowner. Typical residence is assessed at 200,000. 2.5% increase equates to $48 more next year. Next page is a summary of all revenues and expenditures. Lines 14, 15, and 16 are brand new. You'll see local option tax commitments and proceeds flowing through there. The line 16 is the The line sixteen is the reservation for elderly and disadvantaged populations in the recreational program. Line fifteen is.
Can I interrupt you for one second?
Sure, yep.
Do you want everyone to hold questions until you're done or as you go? What's your preference?
Let's take them as we go. Do you have a question, Mr. Mayor?
I do not at this time, no. I'm just setting the tone, okay?
Appreciate that.
Alright, so as we go.
So those are the LOT pathways. That's just basically implementing the policy that we adopted last spring. And summary, you're seeing a sixteen percent drop in revenues and a sixteen percent drop in expenditures. The next cost center is finance and administration. Will draw your attention to lines thirty-seven. The budget stabilization fund, that's a commitment of the LOT. Lines thirty-eight, the redevelopment fund repayment, another commitment of the LOT. And beating you to your question, Mr. Mayor, we hold level funding for mayoral initiatives. On thirty-nine. Not a lot of action elsewhere in finance and admin. Back part, second page of finance and admin, we've reduced line fifty-eight, our legal cost by seventy-five hundred. The Franklin County line sixty-four, the Franklin County tax has gone down a little bit. Thank you, Jim, for your work over there. Down twenty-five hundred bucks. Line sixty-five, there's an increase proposed for the St. Albans Museum based on a proposal we received from them to do some additional education and outreach around the Underground Railroad. And the balance, I believe we've talked about elsewhere.
I, I do now have a question, City Mayor. I see where Amcare is selling. My first thought to that would be that we would potentially see a jump in our, our costs associated with that. It looks like we do a two point five percent increase every year. Has there been any conversations with the new company as to what the expectation is relative to our partnership with them?
We had a good meet and greet with the new team coming in. And, but it was an initial meet and greet and we didn't get a chance to talk to, talk about some of those business items. So you know, there is, I have some thoughts on the matter if that, if that comes up, but I'll, I'll save those for a later venue.
Okay, thank you.
By the way, Dom, Jim, the final, we had our final budget meeting with the county on, on the seventh and the, the, the city's actually coming in just a hair over forty-nine million. So you got a couple, another couple million you can knock off from that.
Excellent. That's great. Thank you. Well done.
They did a good job. The court administrators did.
The next cost.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask? Can you tell me more about the cuts to the Restorative Justice Center?
They're not program cuts. They're there, it's the city contribution. We can talk in a little bit greater detail when we get to that cost center. But the city's base appropriation is thirty thousand and Nina can speak to it when we get there, but I think Nina feels comfortable that we, she can absorb that within her operation.
Okay, thanks.
Debt service. If you look on the far right and column Q, you'll see a whole bunch of notes that say paid off in FY twenty-one. So that's the strategy I was mentioning earlier, where we're just ticking off a whole bunch of loose ends. And then all the way down at the bottom on line sixty-nine, you see that totals to a hundred and forty-seven, a hundred and forty-five thousand in reduced debt service in FY twenty-two. That. Yeah. City clerk is next. Not a lot of activity here. And there's basically two toggle switches within the city clerk budget. The first is on the revenue side is what are we going to do for clerk fees? And the second is on the expense side is are we going to have increased election expenses? So we continue to forecast an increase in city clerk fees with an extra nine grand, bringing that budget up to seventy-five. Last year we did eighty-seven. And we can, we, you know, every, every two years or so, we can toggle down on the election expenses. This is a year where we think we can toggle down to five thousand from seven.
Is, is Curry still with us, Dom?
Yep.
I was just looking at the city clerk fees and the significant drop. What was budgeted and what is accounted for through November. I'm guessing that is definitely COVID related. Is that the case?
And if you, if you look at the line below, we actually are starting to unbundle recording fees versus clerk fees.
Okay. But you still have a, in terms of.
I think Tom is saying add in lines eight and nine for a, a budget to date as of November. Is that what you're going, where you're going, Tom?
Right, and we're also typically about a month behind in, in what's actually shown versus what we've received.
But you're still at a significant less amount than what was budgeted, right? If you add the two together, you're about fifteen thousand versus eighty thousand for half of the year. Right, am I reading that right, Tom?
Uh, no, in November, we're about twenty-seven.
See that, Tim? Add the twenty-two, seven fifty and the four thousand, one, two, eight.
Okay, yep.
And we're still receiving significant amount of revenue in from real estate recordings. COVID might have affected us slightly and some smaller things like dog licenses, but the real estate recordings have been flying in, so that revenue is really steady.
I noticed dog licenses were quite a bit off as well.
Yeah, we're going to try to get those numbers up this year.
Mostly in the Ruby Street area, I think we've had a problem. So I mentioned election expenses. Next is planning and development. We've adjusted line six, we've adjusted zoning revenue to bring it into alignment with previous year's actuals. I think we under budgeted that a little bit this year at thirty-eight. Line forty-two, as I mentioned, we've reduced the city marketing campaign. And I believe the, the, the rest of it is essentially level funded. Not a lot of change. If you jump all the way down to the bottom line, we've got total expenditures in twenty twenty-one, on line fifty-two, total expenditures last year of two forty-six. Total expenditures this year proposed of two forty-four. So net operations, which is the amount taxpayers are picking up, one ninety-three this year, two oh two last year. Next up is assessing. The only change here is line twenty-six, where we mentioned we eliminated the reserve for reappraisal. Next up is the cost center for police. I hit most of this in the intro. You'll see in the revenues, you'll see the significant drop in, in the town contract. On the expense side, you'll see line twenty-six, the cut in salaries. But that's base salaries and you just see all of those reductions in, in the personnel related costs from the overtime budget, FICA medi, VEMERIS, which is the pension workers comp, all of that flows through. Line forty-eight is police consulting. We're continuing to have a relationship with MRI and we're trying to, as we indicated, make greater use of them for some of our loss prevention efforts, backgrounding, that type of thing. So we've budgeted twelve thousand. We've also added in some funds for the police advisory board to be sure for the note taker. We've modeled that on the development review board staffing assistant. Line seventy-four is gasoline. We're reducing costs there because it's just the city. Line seventy-eight, there's a small uptick for the building lease and cost to operate the new building. And if you go all the way down to line eighty-nine, total expenditures in the police department last year was four point one million, this year is two point eight. So sizable drop there. Next cost center is dispatch operations and very similar theme to the rest of the police department. Eighty-nine thousand dollar cut to salary. Let me jump back to revenue for a second. We continue to have a strong regional dispatch program. We offered two-year contracts and a level funded rate to our current customers as a way to shore up the customer base. We're getting a strong response from our regional dispatch partners. We don't, as yet, and we haven't returned to dispatching in the islands, but we're hoping to do so. We aren't anticipating contracting with the Franklin County Sheriff. We were doing that in past years. So all of that accounts for the reduction in revenue. We've balanced that with some offsets on the expenditure side. The chief of, of one is, is the elimination of the dispatch director position. And bottom line, second, jumping all the way down to line forty-nine, last year we spent a million two on dispatch. And this year we're spending nine hundred and forty thousand. So pretty big hit there, three hundred and twenty thousand.
Dom, a quick question. Are there any, are there any towns in Franklin County we don't dispatch for?
Boy, I don't think so. Not the chief. What do you, anything come to mind for you?
No. There's, we, the only place you don't dispatch for is Cisco Valley Rescue does part of the swamp area.
Okay. And they do it twenty-four seven or are they just daytime?
No, they do, they do it twenty-four seven.
Okay, thank you.
I think that's dispatch. Next is animal control. Chad, I know you would like to have more local response for animal control and we can continue to work towards that. But it's about a, you know, eighteen thousand dollar nut to deliver that service. Matter how we cut it. So not a lot of action there. I think we are giving free dog licenses though, the folks who serve as the animal control officer, if anybody knows of somebody who has that gift. Next is the fire department. On the revenue side, we're seeing a reduction in our public health and safety violations, which is a good thing and goal there is safer and healthier community, not a revenue source. That program is maturing. So that accounts for the bulk of the drop in non-property tax revenues. On the expense side, line eighteen, we are, we gave the call force a raise last year and we continue to, Matt's been doing a great job in expanding our recruitment efforts there. So that budget is up a bit. We do have a cut recommended with the chief's concurrence on line fifty-seven on air packs. Typically, we program seventy-five hundred bucks there, but chief feels like we can hold off a year. On those. Next up is the public works department. Line twenty-four and line twenty-five, we had a lot of conversation about trees. We decided to keep tree removal within public works responsibilities and budget. We took a tuck out of it a little bit, dropped it to five grand, but we moved tree replacement to the stormwater fund to be funded with those fees. Line thirty is streetscape maintenance with a slight bump, an extra twenty-five hundred bucks there. That's an area that, you know, it's kind of a flagship program and project for the city. So we got to be sure we're keeping up with our inflationary costs there. Moving into the highway, cost center line forty-three is health benefits. Fairly sizable bump there, which is, which is a good thing. It reflects the stability of that workforce. Marty's done a great job at building that team and holding on to them and we're starting to have families and have kids and that type of thing. So that's good. Line fifty-three is our vehicle repair and maintenance. There's an increase that align more with the actuals with our experience. And then we're into the, if you drop down the lines seventy-seven through eighty or so, the next few lines is the park maintenance line items. We have all of these are level funded. So somewhere in the past years, we've got two thousand for Houghton. We've got fifteen for Taylor Park. Two for Barlow. And a thousand for Choffee Park. So the bulk of it's been, been, the whole thing's been level funded. We have moved the Hardak portion over to recreation as it's larger cost center because we're doing a lot more there.
Dom, a quick question. That doesn't do lawn mowing and that kind of maintenance, right? That's kind of repair and upkeep.
Yeah, it's more project based, right? Marty, you want to speak to that?
Yeah, that is more special projects for each individual park.
Thank you.
Where did you tie in the Greg Brown Lodge?
Coming up. Public Works Department then, last item, line one oh one. We have level funded paving, no proposed decrease, even on a tough budget year. We felt like that's not a place to, so net operations, line one thirteen, that's the amount the taxpayers are contributing. Net of other revenues, we're holding pretty consistent there, just over seven sixty-seven. Next cost center is recreation and the strategy in recreation was a couple of things to reflect the growth that's occurring up at Hardak with the additional addition of the Greg Brown Lodge and the opportunities that that presents from a programming perspective, but also the obligations that that presents from a liability perspective and a maintenance perspective. So you'll recall when we were talking about the pool, Peter talked about having fifty cars up there on a Saturday or Sunday just for folks sledding. There's a lot going on up there. And so we've, we've tried to respond to that. The other theme is we've got a lot of interest in a lot of, in our rec programs and trying to adjust our rates accordingly. So we're showing some increased revenues and some expenditures there in areas where we've adjusted the rates in our highest demand areas. Rec can get real granular real quick, so I find it's best to kind of look at the, the bottom lines in each, within each division. So our general rec line twenty-four revenues for our general programs, we're proposing an additional thirty thousand there. The bulk of that is in our day camps, line ten. And then also line eighteen, where we're getting some of the reimbursement from other towns based on adjustments in the rates. On the expense side of the general rec programs, you see a lot of that flowing through, dropping down. The, the expenses are up at eighty-six, but the bulk of that is line sixty-eight, which is the local option tax reservation of funds. And right, we haven't had conversations about how to implement that program. It's embedded within the LOT policy. So this just shows you that those funds will be reserved until we figure out a structure for that.
Hyper.
The pool, on the pool side. The pool on the uh pool side, uh that's another one of our very high demand areas. So we're showing an additional twenty grand. Um, but we've adjusted our pool lessons. Um, and um made some uh adjustments to our programs such as the swim team. Um, very minor adjustment to the daily game. Next, I would uh dr- uh direct your attention to drop down to line one oh eight, which is where we start talking about Hardak. Um, as a cost center and as a program. Uh, we are anticipating some additional revenues there. We're just we've added, we're just spending an additional twenty grand. Uh, through the additional rental of that facility, but also the programming uh that's possible by having a facility like the Greg Brown Lodge uh against the backdrop of all that Hardak offers. And Kelly can share some of her ideas uh there. If you'd like, uh, but Kelly and Tom and I spent a good bit of time exploring that and figuring wanting to be sure that we were appropriately conservative. Um, but also harnessing some of the revenue potential because we're also harvesting or experiencing the expense side of the equation. So uh further on down, you see that we've got uh new items in there such as um ten thousand for uh additional use of contractors uh to maintain the facility. Uh, just cleaning the facility after uh rental alone uh is ten thousand. Uh, that's modeled on our cleaning costs in Barlow. So um we've got, you know, three quarters of a million dollar asset that ostensibly was given to us. And now it's our job uh to maintain it and really help it. Help it give back to the community by offering the right programmatic mix. Uh, the next page is Barlow, which uh is a um is a facility, I think, kind of in transition. We we will continue to uh deliver programming out of there. Um. Uh, and certainly we will continue to off to operate the park. I think Kelly and I are having discussions about what's the best base camp uh for our day, best base camp for our day camp. Is it Barlow or um could it eventually be uh Hardak as that begins to become a base or could there be multiple camps? Um, we're not really sure yet, but what we are sure is that Barlow is not a cheap facility to hold on to. One forty-seven, one forty-seven, it costs us forty-six grand a year just to run the place and we ought to be spending more. Um, so um you know, I that's certainly a important piece of infrastructure for that neighborhood up there. Um, but it might be time to look at how do we find the best fit with regard to programming tenant mix. And from time to time, we get approached to lease it out for uh similar use uh to what's been going on up there. That might be worth looking at. None of that's incorporated into the budget, though. So uh all the way down then lines one sixty-five through seven gives you a sense of kind of the big picture on rec, uh general rec net operations. We're proposing to make a fifty-six thousand dollar investment there. Pool, we think uh we might be able to um have a little bit of a profit center there. Um, we've based on the rate adjustments. Um, a lot of that ends up coming down to the weather. And Hardak, um, we're continuing to show a ten thousand dollar investment, which is where we've been uh similarly to past years. So the revenues and expenditures that we mentioned up above uh sugar out to that nine thousand five forty-seven. We're almost done. Next is the parking program. Uh, you're seeing significant drop offs in revenues there that uh that we're um forecasting. Uh, that's uh a large result to the pandemic and the fact that um nobody's staying at the hotel and it's hard to go out to eat. So um, we've budgeted accordingly. Um, it might turn out that this is overly conservative if things bounce back. Uh, you know, this budget starts uh six months from now. So uh maybe we'll be in a reopening phase by that point, but we haven't budgeted to put to um to plan on it. Um. All the way down then at the bottom line forty-two is our net operations. And so there were years when the parking garage and the parking program was throwing off some funds to support uh the general fund. Um, that was our um um, two or three years ago, they were there. Um, uh currently, um, that's occurring on a very small basis of, you know, projecting uh five thousand dollars. So. And finally, uh, the uh Franklin uh Brandau Restorative Justice Center. This is our two county uh RJC program, the Mina Spearheads. Line sixteen is municipal contributions. Uh, Tom, is that all of the muni contributions hours plus the others others that contribute?
Correct.
Uh, so we're showing that uh showing a proposed drop there. Um, and uh the bulk of the budget's a million dollar organization that is primarily supported by the state and federal government. Um, so Nina can take questions and talk about the impact of our proposed cut uh if you'd like, but um we've had some conversations and I think she feels like she can absorb it without a lot of programmatic input. And that's it for my part. So I would welcome any questions, comments that you would have. As a part in comment, I will share, we had a really good meeting with finance committee last week and it was favorably recommended on from the finance committee.
I just got a quick question for Nina on her on the budget. So the biggest decrease is in um the salaries. So I'm going to guess that we've lost that you've lost an employee or two. And is is that directly related to for distorted justice in the schools because schools are in session full time?
Yep, thanks Chad. So we did lose um our restorative justice and school specialist, Camille Kuzman. Um, we are still doing work in schools. Camille happened to move to Washington State. So it was kind of a combination of uh funding for that position changing and Camille's decision to um move to the West Coast. But we are still in schools. It's just it's heavily reduced right now to your point. Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Nina, you feel like the cuts to your program um are observable? I mean, I I just want to make sure this is this works for you.
Well, thank you, Kate. Um, I I think so. You know, I I had some good conversations with Dom and Tom and um you know, as as conservative as I could be, we because of COVID, because of some of the reduction in referral and some changes in the organization, we did, we we organized a couple of positions. Um, and we were able to make it work and and I think it's sustainable for now. But thank you for checking.
Nina, thanks for your efforts on that. Any other council persons, any other questions or comments for Dom? Any other of the department heads?
I just I just want to make a a comment to Nina. Nina, would it be possible to come in? Uh, I know I did a walkthrough with you once and that was really super helpful uh talking to me about some of the things you do. Um, would it be possible for you to do that in the future and come in and talk? Uh, talk to us and talk to the community to be a community about some of the great programs you have. Uh, one that I particularly like is um helping people pay pay their rent. Um, so you know, we might have, we might have someone that's trying to come out of prison and, you know, they're not put them on the streets and help them pay their rent. Um, which I feel is much more cost effective than housing them in in prison because they will house them there if they don't have a place to go. So instead of spending sixty thousand dollars a year to do that, we spend ten, twelve thousand dollars to house them um and give and prop them up with COSAs. So is that something that you can uh come in and discuss with us?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that anytime.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.
Council, any other questions, comments?
Tim, I'll make a comment. It's uh Tim Hawkins. Um, if you remember about uh two months ago uh at a council meeting when Dominic was starting to prepare us for getting ready for the budget. Um, I made a comment that I thought that could bypass the finance committee and go directly to the city council. Uh, because if someone would have told me then that, well, we're going to come in around two point five percent, I would have said, we'll take it. I was worried that we were going to come in five percent, six percent, something like that. Um, and when I saw this, and I think all of us were surprised at the finance committee. Uh, and it was just, I I think it was an amazing job both by Dominic and uh of the um the rest of the team at City Hall because uh this is, I think, in these times, an extraordinary uh budget.
I'll second you on that, Tim. I agree one hundred percent um that they that they did a su- super job in in uh these times with COVID.
Thanks, Tim. I I mean, I I don't want to sound like a pessimist, but my I've I've stated this concern for the last two years and I'll state it again this year. Uh, it's going to be a tough budget to pass, not because it's two point five percent, but because we very often get lumped in with the education budget. And Mike, I guess I'd be curious to get your feedback on what the expectation. We've heard nine percent increase on the education budget. And I think that's when we get lumped in together. And uh I think we need to do a, as a city, better at a job of advocating for our own budget moving forward. Mike, do you have any thoughts on?
Yeah, so I thanks, Mr. Mayor, for teeing that up. So I have two thoughts. The first one is, you know, last year we had a zero percent. And this year we're talking about two point five. And that is such a small increase that um, you know, what we heard and what was obvious in the finance committee meeting that we haven't really talked about is that that's just not sustainable long term. Um, but I think it's entirely appropriate to keep those increases down right now. Um. I also think it's important to acknowledge that the state of the economy in the state and here locally is the problems of COVID nineteen and the pandemic have not been felt evenly across businesses and industry. They've not been felt evenly across socioeconomic uh levels and um we do see a lot of hurt in our community. There's also been an enormous amount of um spending in some areas. There are businesses who are doing really well. Uh, there are a lot of us who are fortunate to be doing well. And um we have had an unprecedented federal investment into the state of Vermont in the last year. You know, the combination of the CARES Act funding, uh, the stimulus payments, and then this most recent relief package. Um, it's far north of two billion dollars in additional money. And when you think about what the entire state budget is in general, it's it's a lot. So the the actual economic impact is all over the place. Um, and you know, my impression from what we've heard from Tom and and Dominic is that, you know, we we haven't seen the kind of delinquencies that you might expect if the economy was hurting across the board. Um, and we've actually seen pretty steady uh revenues on the sales tax front. The letter that went out December first, and I I wrote a letter to the editor back in December that I'm happy to circulate again to everybody to address your comments, Mr. Mayor, about the anticipated increase in the education property tax rates. And that letter has to assume that the economy is what the economists projected in the August official joint reforecast. The economy's been doing much better than that forecast, not as well year over year, but better than that forecast. Um. The second thing it has to assume is that the only thing that changes are the property tax rates and that there's no other policy intervention, no federal funding, no general fund transfers from the state, that the only lever that gets pulled is the property tax rate. And the legislature is never ever going to allow that kind of increase to happen. The idea that there would be no policy intervention uh is just a nonstarter. It's off the table, especially when uh we put more than, there's more than two hundred million dollars in reserves. I mean, just in the Ed reserve alone, I think it's it's in the the high tens of millions of dollars approaching a hundred million. So bottom line is that number uh in the December first letter is always, it's designed by statute and by tradition to say, if you guys don't do anything, this is what's going to happen to the property tax rate. And with everything that's happened with COVID and the impact that it's had on um school budgets and the pressures that it put on, uh, the idea that we would not use any of that federal investment in our reserves to keep that kind of a shock on property taxpayers from happening, um, I think is it it's just not going to happen. So um, I guess I would say anticipate a much smaller increase in the property tax rate than the December letter warns. Um, there's going to be a lot of conversation over the next sixteen weeks in the legislature and especially over the next few weeks as we you know, figure out those initial rates and we see what school budgets pass and which don't on town meeting day, but um we're not going to see any kind of increase like what was in that December letter. Thanks for all the editorializing.
Did you want to pro- project your increase?
I would say it's I I would it it's probably going to be less than half that, but I that would be, that's just a total shot in the dark.
Okay. Thank you for that, Mike. Um. Any other questions or comments? Anyone on the council? Hearing none, let's move to the general public. Does anyone uh on the call have any comments to make relative to the budget and what you've heard this evening? Um, either raise your Zoom hand or um or feel free to jump in.
So I'll jump in. Hi.
Uh, wait a minute, I got a call on you.
Uh, just a sec. Remember seniority. Don't forget it. Okay, so um I'm uh Johnny McGinn. I'm a member of the Parks Commission. Um, a while back, there was a group of us from the Parks Commission that approached the council uh requesting the possibility of a budget that we as a commission would oversee to try and take um some of the smaller improvements off off the table and just take care of them. Um, it was recommended at that time that we just, you know, create our own ideas for what we wish for and what we're looking for. Um. We recognize obviously after Dominic went through that budget um that um first of all, we appreciate the allocations within the budget for the parks. Um, Houghton, Taylor and Barlow. Um, and that there's many cuts throughout the budget that everybody has to absorb. Um, but we we obviously feel that we've spent so much on our downtown and how incredible it is that we have to keep our perks up um in order to uh in order to utilize them to their fullest. Some of the things, so what I would like to just share with you real quickly. Some of the ideas that are some of the things that the commission's looking for. Um, and some will be possible, some won't be, some are just might be on the wishlist. Um, one thing is a shade structure of some sort at Houghton. Um, that we planted trees, but that'll be a while before they really provide the shade that kids and adults need while at the playground or or utilizing the park. But um with the with the uh possibility of a splash pad at Holton Park, the shade strike structure might be something that could um piggyback onto the splash pad in some way, shape or form. Um, so that, you know, that could be examined or considered. Um. The one of the other items is um that was on our list were uh lamp posts within the within Taylor Park that match the streetscape. And with the Kingman Street um renovation taking place, that it might be possibly the best time financially to tag another seven lamp posts um into that uh into that purchase. So that the ones in Taylor Park could be replaced so that they do match the streetscape. Um. Passive seating in in the three parks was brought up by several commission members as well. Again, with Kingman Street being um done this, this year, possibly that this would be the time to incorporate a few extra purchases within the parks out of, out of that purchase. One thing that was requested from some people that might also tie into the Kingman Street project are some, some bollards in the southeast corner coming down from Fair, down Fairfield Street at the southeast corner, the intersection of Fairfield and Church, that if a car were to lose control, lose brakes, had, you know, whatever situation would occur, that there would be some sort of obstruction within that corner that would would not allow them to continue down into the park, causing tremendous injury to anybody there with the musical instruments, with them, you know, with the farmer's market, whatever, people just in the park. After that, what we had were just general regular maintenance of the monuments. The gazebo, the signs. We noticed, you know, over time, the signs, the, just the overall, just needing to be repainted, touched up. And certainly the fountain. And we're not really quite sure how the fountain plays into the overall maintenance concerns or costs, but it is something that we just want to make sure that, as I'm sure you do, want to stay ahead of and not get, not get behind any types of repairs, whether it's physical or, or structural on, on the fountain. So that's pretty much what we had as far as our lists that we came up with going forward in 2021. So thank you and thanks for all the, all the effort on the budget.
Thank you for that. Dom, quick question. Is there an opportunity to incorporate some of that into some of those projects?
Well, here goes the pool. Let me give us some thought. Some are easier than others. The, like the Taylor Park lamp post, we've still got a TIF project for Taylor Park and that'd be a an easy way to bang that out. They're pretty expensive. I want to say, Chip, what are they, 15 or so a piece? 12, something like that? What do those lights cost?
12,000?
Yeah, how much?
Oh, I found the number a while back. It's, it's not that much, but it's
I think it's 9,000.
Yeah, it's close. And it's been, it's been, oh, actually, it's been several, a few years since we bid one of those out.
The other thing to keep in mind with those is the electrical in the park. When you start doing those individual posts, you're going to have to run electrical and conduit and that may play into that master plan we've looked at for Taylor Park.
And, and the commissions, yeah, I hear what you're saying, Marty. In the commission, when we do discuss the, when we do discuss Taylor Park, there's a lot of comments about, could we do X, Y, or Z? Well, where do we stand on that plan? I mean, we all put a year and a half of our lives into that plan, some even more than that. But you know, what we find is we keep kind of backing off any change or any idea because we don't know when that plan will be implemented. And as a result, you know, do we just wait indefinitely? And so, you know, it's kind of a six of one, half a dozen the other of how we approach it.
I think the, the, the shade structure, there's been some talk about moving the shade structure that's at the pool to Houghton Park. And I think that might be some of the planning around the splash pad and all those things, you know, that'd be a place to incorporate the shade structure. The you know, I'd say to the council, let's get through the rest of the hearing and, and you know, maybe there's a way to show some love for the Parks Commission with some dedicated funds. If so inclined.
Let me just jump on that one just quickly. I know there was, I've had conversations relative to the Taylor Park Trust Fund. Tom, you and I've talked about that a little bit, that there are funds available for Taylor Park improvements. I'm, I'm not sure if the city gets that on an annual basis or it has to be requested. But that may be a conversation that we may want to sit down. Butch Hebert is, I believe, the trustee in charge of that. And see how we might be able to utilize some of that money moving forward. Tom, do you remember how that works?
We request the funds. We just maintain them for the trust. I don't know the dollar amount in that fund off the top of my head, but it's, it's in the range of 10 grand.
10 grand, the funds total?
Yeah, it might be, you know, a bit more than that, but it's, it's not a huge number.
Can you reach out to Butch and, and see what's there? Do you know Butch?
We can reach out to him and we've got the bank statements for them. So I'll, I'll shoot you an email tomorrow with what's there.
Okay. Ms. McGinn, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Is there anyone else on the phone that would like to speak to the budget? Or any questions on the budget? Feel free to jump in. Anyone? I too would like to thank the finance committee. All the department heads, Dom and, and Tom for all your work on this. I think Tim Hawkins nailed it on the head when he said a few months back, it was not looking optimistic. But I think, I think this is a, a budget that residents can support moving forward and I hope that's the case. But as I said earlier, I think it's going to take all of us to get out and answer questions and promote it. So
everybody's, it looks like everybody's tightening their belt and made some sacrifices to make this work this year. And I really, I think it's exceptional on that, that they did that.
Thanks, Chip. Any other comments, questions? Hearing none.
I'll make it to advance the articles, the budget articles for town meeting day as presented by the department heads.
We have a motion by Tim, second and by Jim. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, the motion passes. We'll move on to, I believe, item number 12.
Motion to accept minutes 12, 14, 20.
We have a motion and a second to accept the minutes of 12, 14, 20. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? No opposition. Motion passes. Minutes approved. Moving on to 13, warrants.
Motion to approve warrants, 12, 31, 20.
We have a motion from Tim. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Marie. Thank you, Marie. Any questions or comments on warrants? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving warrants of 12, 31, say aye or thumbs up.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none. Warrants are approved. We will, unless anyone has any pressing issues for updates, speak now. Any council person, anything? Anything major?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a motion. Is there a second? Thank you, James. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And we are, we are adjourned. Thank you. Thank you all.
Everyone.